All right, guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started here. Kristen will be here shortly. She had her daughter made it to finals, I believe, in track. So she's finishing that out and then she'll be here. So with that, we don't have a pastor here, so I'll go ahead and do the invocation. Sorry, I forgot to say I want to welcome you to the regularly scheduled council meeting, Governing Body of Spring Hill, Kansas on Thursday, April tenth. Now we'll do the invocation. I got to thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful weather that we've had the last few days. God, I just pray that you would bless everything we do tonight, God, that you bless our thoughts and our actions and help us to make the best decisions for the community, God, and for our citizens, God, and help us to take each and every one's opinion into account and just ultimately make the best decision for our community. In Jesus' name, amen. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, with the stand and the nation under God, indivisible, with the same justice as all.
Madam Clerk, if you could please take the roll.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Thrawn?
Here.
Mrs. Feedback? Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum present.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. We did have a request to add a discussion item, Community Event, first Fridays after citizen participation. And then also, we want to add a second presentation, and it's an update on the 191st and 169 Signal Project. Other than those two items, are there any other questions or comments on the agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Next, we'll move on to citizen participation. This is a time when the public can come in and speak about anything they would like to talk about. We did not have anyone put their name on the list, but if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak about anything, now would be your time. If you just want to state your name and your address, that'd be awesome. Yes, sir. That way the people online can hear you.
Yeah. My name's Chris Woods. I live 225th Terrace, behind the Price Chopper. Wanted to speak on the backyard chickens, and I have a couple handouts for you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chris Woods. Two zero eight one six, West 225th Terrace. You bet. All right. So just listen on here on this piece of paper. I did just... Okay, all right, sorry. Did research, just a couple of benefits of having backyard chickens. I won't go into major detail, but there are sources listed with each one of these items here. So just listen to some of the major topics. Backyard chickens promote a healthier community. There was a study done by Cambridge University, and the effects of it shown there. Provides us with family and educational opportunities as well, which I think today is more and more important, as we're seeing, just needing the benefit of having education for both our children and then just ourselves in general. Chicken service is a good form of pest control, and then also the additional revenue from those who have applied for permits with less than a quarter acre, which is what we currently have today in the code. And then also those who are currently operating outside of the permit, without permits. So all this boils down to what the proposal actually is. So Spring Hill should reduce the acreage minimum from 0.25 acres to no minimum. And this would be providing that all other locational requirements are met. And then I would also say that the city should consider raising the maximum number of birds in the smallest category to six birds in this new 0 to 0.5 acreage category. And then even considering up to 10 birds in that minimum category. And where that comes from is the cooperative extension is an extension of the United States Department of Agriculture. And the National Institute of Food and Agriculture says that for laying hens, a minimum of three to four square feet per hen indoor and 10 square feet per hen outdoors recommended. And beyond that, there is no minimum acreage requirement that the USDA currently has. Just this recommendation. And what we currently have in the code allows for up to that maximum that we have. So other major cities in our proximity also allow for more birds with even smaller pen size requirements or lots versus what our city currently has. So on the back here, it lists the City of Alatha allows for a lot size of less than three acres, allows up to 10 birds with no roosters. City of Shawnee, maximum of 10 birds, two square feet per bird required, which is a lot smaller than what we currently have in our code. And then City of Miriam, Kansas, six maximum birds, minimum pen of 144 square feet, again, smaller than what our current allows for. And then City of Mission, Kansas, allows six maximum with that same amount of acreage. So all this, again, just saying, you know, Spring Hill, it's experienced on a lot of growth. We have a lot of families who are out here trying to, you know, be just outside of the city, but also want to, you know, be close enough to the city and have some of those benefits that we get to be out here. And I think this is just one of those things we consider and have a good opportunity for the city.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. Just to let you know, you probably saw it there on the agenda, but we do have a discussion item for this at closer to the end of the meeting that we'll talk, that we'll all talk about and give our opinions and stuff. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and close citizen participation at this time and move on to a discussion item. And that discussion item is a community event, first Fridays. And Sharon Mistle with the Chamber of Commerce is here to do a little presentation on it.
Mayor, I'm gonna sit out of this one. Organizations participate in this.
All right.
The city is too, so maybe it doesn't matter. I did have a little handout I put together.
Thank you.
We can share.
That's okay. I have some more.
Okay.
Thank you, Sharon.
So Glenda called me today and just asked if I'd come just fill you in a little bit of kind of where we are with this, because I know you're gonna have an event permit to approve probably at your next meeting. But I guess it was probably three months ago, Rhonda and I kind of had a discussion about this. I know some of it maybe came from Council President Young. So but this is an event that we're looking at doing on first Fridays through the summer. So just when the weather's nice, hopefully. And this summer, we're looking at four evenings and then one late morning event, because the Fourth of July is on a first Friday this year. So I put a little bit of information on there. This is all kind of coming together. But we did attempt to do something similar to this through the Rec Commission in the chamber, probably six years ago. And I think so much of this is timing and in the collaborative voice. So it seemed like it was kind of one of those things that just wasn't going then. They, the Rec Commission spent some money on some bands and stuff and really good entertainment and location and stuff. Maybe it wasn't, we just weren't where we are now. So the Recreation Commission is involved in this. The city, Rhonda's been very instrumental in moving this along. And then the chamber, and then we also have some pretty good buy-in from the business community. So I think that's gonna be what really pulls this thing together. So what we've submitted as an application through the Recreation Commission is to close off the street, 5:30 to 8:30, and to have one or two food trucks. We will have room for about 10 vendors, which could be arts and crafts or, you know. We just really don't want anything that's gonna compete with the businesses that are already downtown, because some of them will be open. So no ice cream, no coffee, but just have people bring a chair. We'll have some chairs and tables set up, but just a good community event where people can come. The hard part about it is we really don't know, like, how many people, how it's gonna go. So this first one on, that we're hoping to get pulled together by May 2nd, will be kind of our test for it. So we'll be getting some information out to people. And then we'll have a few more to kind of ease through the summer, and then we'll see how it goes. And it would be wonderful if it's something that we could continue in future years. Just as kind of a side note, if you see the most of the towns that do something like this, they're usually done through a convention and visitors bureau, which we do not have. So that's something that I think would be a good, maybe dip in the water to see kind of what the taste is and what the thoughts are about maybe at some point down the road establishing a convention and visitors bureau. So sometimes that's done through a city, sometimes that's done through a chamber. There's all different ways that those are set up. So do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't really have any questions. I think it's a great idea. I've been down, you know, down to the first Fridays, you know, downtown. It's a lot of fun. And I think it's cool to highlight the businesses downtown and then other businesses as well. But I think it's, you know, we have a very cool historic downtown, and some people don't even trek to that part of town. So it'll be something to kind of draw, draw people over there.
Yeah, one of the things I would like to mention too is that a lot of times when I look at doing something new, we always, the question's always like, where's the money gonna come from? And we did have Kendall Bank, State Bank of Spring Hill, now Kendall Bank, step up and do a pretty significant sponsorship that will definitely help us cover the cost of some of this. So the music in particular, and so that was very generous of them. And it's actually a really good partnership, because their bank is on the corner where you would turn to go to downtown. So we're looking at doing a sign, some kind of banner that would direct people downtown, and then they can have their name on it, and it'll be directing people downtown. So it's kind of a win-win, great partner, business partner to have, so.
Nice.
So I just had those two QR codes. If you know of somebody that wants to volunteer, they can sign up through that. Or if you know somebody that would like to be a vendor, and we're talking, or music, it's just kind of a basic inquiry form that they put a lot of their information in. So people have to have, collect their own sales tax and some of that sort of thing, but it should be a really great thing, so.
Have you already lined up, like, the music acts and everything?
We have some, we haven't, like, pinpointed it in, but we do have several people that are interested in doing some of the music. So we're doing, we're collecting all that stuff now. So if you know of somebody for sure to have them fill out the form, and then we'll contact them.
Yeah, I just know a couple, like, that have done BBs or, you know,
Yeah.
at the hideout and stuff like that. So I would think local would be kind of cool.
Yeah, we're kind of really, and when we say local, we're kind of looking at trying to do a kind of hyper-local, like, Spring Hill local.
That's what I was thinking.
As much as we can, but we know that that might not be possible.
Not every time, but it would be nice to.
Yeah, for even the vendors, food trucks, everything, we'd like it to be the local people, supporting the local people. But, you know, we might have to reach out a little bit further than just, than just Spring Hill. But yeah, if you know of somebody, or if you want to just send me an email with some names, that I'd be glad to contact them.
And I'll send this out too. I'll send this out and not for everybody knows some people.
Absolutely. And we'll be getting, I just put this together today. We are kind of, we didn't want to get too far ahead, since we don't have the permit approved yet. But these signups are for all the dates, so they could go in and say, I'd like to volunteer for these dates. And if one of them gets rained out or something, you know, they just want to be there for that one, so.
No, I think this is really cool. This is obviously, Rhonda and I talked, I think it's been a couple of years now since we talked about it. I think this is something we could really probably catapult us for activities over the summer for locals and for people that live in towns around us or all over, so.
Well, it's kind of an alternative. So we used to have the street dance down there, you know, after Fall Festival, and then we just grew too big for that. So this would be kind of like a smaller version where we can still have something, where we close the street down and still have a lot of people down there and food and games and stuff like that without maxing it out like, you know, we did before, where we'd have, you know, 3,000 people down there.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're hoping for that kind of thing. But I did have a good, really good discussion with the fire department, and they, you know, were kind of talking about what they would want to be able to get through the street and that sort of thing. But then the person I was talking to was like, well, can we just come and have the truck down there? And I was like, sure. So I think that we'll have some support. I think people want to, want to stay close if they can, but sometimes there's just really not a place for them to do that, so.
No, I think this is gonna be great. Appreciate you working on it. You been, Rhonda?
Awesome. Thank you.
It was definitely a collaborative effort, so there was lots of, lots of hands in this. So very, very thankful for all the help, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to a presentation by the Cemetery Board and their annual report, and Mr. Larry Sumner is here.
Good evening. Here again this year. We've been busy at the cemetery this last year, 2024. We got new pavement down, the whole thing, which makes it nice. We, traffic has picked up with strollers and bicycles and golf carts and you name it. It's a, it's a busy place. I wish we had a way to count to see how many people that actually come up there. Just run down through some things. It's, I don't know if you got the printout. I sent this in. I don't know if they had put that in your packet. Maybe not. Okay, I think that, you can have that one. Well, you'll get it. We installed some drainage in there where we had some flooding going on. Put some barriers, barricade things up to make sure people don't get off of the blacktop. We white striped it, kind of bringing their attention to, there is a ledge there. We don't want an elderly person, or even me, to trip over the thing. We did our avenue of flags. I don't know if you remember, several years ago, we had that program. We, we put them out at Memorial and Veterans Day every year. We've been cleaning that chain link fence out completely around the whole place. Lot of brush overtook some of that area. So we've got that pretty well cleaned up. We're doing, we've had discussion. We're trying to put some information together of having like a tri-fold cemetery history for Spring Hill. You know, it was hit by the tornado in 57. And a lot of, a lot of important people, we think, that are buried there. So we're gonna try to put together a little tri-fold thing, just about history of Spring Hill Cemetery. So we're kind of excited about that. Last year, we sold 13 new burial spaces, and we had 30 burials last year. So it's, it does get filled up. I mean, we got, we still have room, but no more. December meeting, we had a cookie exchange, because I wanted to give thanks for members that do volunteer their time. So we had a cookie exchange after the regular meeting, and spouses were, friends were included, so we had a good time with that. That is a whole lot in a very short time. We installed a security camera. We was having some trouble up there with whiskey bottles, beer bottles being broken. We, I don't know if you remember, we, we had in the act someone stealing dirt from the area. That was taken care of. We have visitors from deer to coons to, there's a lot of wildlife that goes up there.
On foxes.
Yeah, foxes, a lot. So it's, it's kind of interesting. We ran through money-wise last year. We brought in around 43,000 with the thing we have with the city. And we, our expenses came out to about 76,000. So it's, it's a lot of money that, for the city to, you know, help us take care of the place. And we're very serious about it. It's, we not only have to answer to the people of the city here, but also the ones that are, that are buried out there. So we want to take care of it the best we can.
Awesome. I had a question, and I know this is probably maybe a few years down the road, but I've had a couple different people interested in wondering if we would ever, like, create a digital database with mapping and stuff, so people that, you know, maybe know a relative or know somebody that they could pull it up on a computer and say, okay, this guy's right here in this plot here.
If you go to the city's website and to the cemetery, there is a place where you can find your loved one. It is digitized and it's online.
Okay. I'll point them in that direction.
And we have yellow stars by all the veterans. So it's, it's, it's online.
So all of them are on there?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay.
Yes, I went around to each one of them. There's a lot of work in that. My wife and I and a couple of board members are putting that together and getting it online.
Good. Okay. I'll point them to that.
And it's a great tool that helps us to know that what's available, you know, for us to help sell. Also, the planning ahead and knowing if we are getting low in numbers and spaces. So it's a good tool for us to use besides letting people know where their loved ones are.
Awesome.
Y'all welcome to come up anytime. It's got a new road around that thing. You can.
Yeah, I've driven on it once. It's pretty nice.
Yeah, yes.
I had a question. What is your contact information? Like, if I wanted to volunteer, or somebody wanted to volunteer, is that on the website as well, or is there a phone?
Yeah, if you go to the Cemetery Board on the website, there's our bylaws of the cemetery, to help you understand what, what's involved in burial or cremation of, you know, how much our space is, you know, we sell them for 600 apiece. You can have, if you have cremation, we accept like two urns per space or one body. So it's, it's a way also to help save some money. And we're like the cheapest one in the whole area, you know. Get into Lathan, Overland Park, and they're 2,500 a space. We're trying to keep ours for Spring Hill, 600, as long as we can survive, that's what we're gonna do.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments?
Very good.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next we have another presentation, and this is on the 191st Street and US 169 Signal Project. And Mrs. Abel, our city engineer, you have the floor.
Okay, well, I know there's been some discussion lately about the 191st Street and 169 Signal, so wanted to give you guys a project update. Thought it was a good time to do that. So a little bit of history for some of the news. So a little bit of history for some of the new people on the city council. Um, last year, uh, the city council approved a task order for Lampray Nielsen, our on, one of our on-call city engineers uh, to do the uh engineering design for a hundred ninety first and one sixty nine signal. Part of that project team included uh Merge Midwest as their traffic engineer. In July, the city submitted an application for congressional funding through Sharice David's office to assist with some of those project costs. Unfortunately, we were not awarded that funding. We found out about three weeks ago that um that funding was not available to us. Uh, in October of twenty twenty four, uh, Lampray Nielsen uh started uh was completed their topo survey. The topography survey along the uh area. And um it took a little bit of wa- a little bit of time because we were ultimately had to wait on KDOT to provide us an access permit uh, to do that survey. So there was a couple of weeks there that we weren't able to start on it right away. Uh, once we had the initial survey completed, then Lampray Nielsen worked on getting some of those preliminary layouts to us. Um, those preliminary layouts included a couple of different options for uh the design. So kind of picture a hundred ninety ninth street with the slip lane. That was one of the options. And so we decided to go with more of a traditional uh traffic signal uh for our preliminary design. So um, once we had the preliminary design li- uh lined up, we uh finalized the traffic study. So that traffic study included um traffic counts, turning movements and uh some crash history. So we've got uh Janelle Clayton, who is our traffic engineer from Merge Midwest. She'll be up here in just a minute to kind of go through that a little bit more. I'm not a traffic engineer. She is. She'll answer all your questions. Um, so moving on, in December, the traffic design memo was uh sent to KDOT for their review. Uh, the report uh provided some estimations on future growth for our community. Uh, this helped to determine what those geometric improvements needed to be. So uh how many turn lanes we needed, what the queue length was for those turn lanes and such. Uh, so we submitted that in December. Um, we received comments from KDOT in February uh, based on that. And uh we did set up a meeting following receiving those comments so that we could um review those comments in person. So we uh met with uh KDOT later on in February. So February, February twenty fifth, the project team met with KDOT staff at the district headquarters. And um during that meeting, we talked a little bit more in detail about the specifics of the crash history um, and some of the growth data and what some of the um information that KDOT wanted to see and what they thought was extraneous information. So again, Janelle can answer a lot of those specific questions, but we ultimately wanted to find out what the growth, the appropriate growth rate was. Also, um, KDOT is working on a case seven study from uh I thirty five down to uh the county line, so Johnson County line. So that was also brought up as far as like what are the future future thoughts of improvements at this intersection specifically? And how long would it take before we went to those ultimate improvements? So that was all part of that discussion. Um, in March, on uh March eleventh, we had a follow-up meeting with KDOT to kind of uh to meet with their on-call engineer, which was Drain Systems, to go through specifically that traffic data and just really um see how the sausage was made and go through specifically the numbers and every. We had the traffic engineers nerding out on all the traffic data. So um that was the meeting where we, we really looked at those assumptions and re- and updated the traffic model. Um, so we received revised crash data from um KDOT last Friday on the fourth. We turned around and submitted the revised study on Monday, the seventh. So we were able to get all of that done. One positive note was during that meeting that we had with um KDOT at the end of February was whenever we weren't sure about the status of the congressional funding. And so we just started asking questions about, hey, does KDOT have any extra funding just laying around that they want to throw at us for this project? And they actually did. So um that's when they talked about a um some local funding that they have through their IC program that they offer up to some of the smaller community or some of the communities around the state of Kansas for projects just like this. So uh I submitted a preliminary application um to uh get considered for that funding. It would be funding up to two million dollars. So um at our next city council meeting, I will be up in front of you, as I will be later tonight, asking for your approval to apply for that grant. And then with that approval, I'll submit the final funding application. So um I think that is everything. I would like to invite Janelle to come up here and show you some of the traffic modeling information, kind of give you a preview as to what we're thinking and answer any questions related to traffic. We also have Chad Thompson from Lampray Nielsen here to answer any questions that you might have about the engineering design. So this is your time to find out as much as you want to find out about the preliminary design.
That's great.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Janelle Clayton with Merge Midwest Engineering. I am going to take over your screens here with some really exciting traffic models to watch while I speak. So get that up and running. I have two models here. And one is for the AM peak hour and one is for the PM peak hour. I'm gonna run it at two times speed. But you can kind of just watch, um, this is a ten-year projection. So this is after signalization and our improvements. Um, as this is going, you can just kind of watch. And the, like, you'll see trucks and vehicles in here. The trucks are representative of the truck percentages of the counts that we, we took out there. So I'll let this play in the background. I don't know if you, you want me to zoom in or if you guys can see that at all, but. Okay, so as Allison said, it's been a process um with these studies and models to KDOT. Um, just for some background information, we did collect traffic counts last May. We counted on a Thursday, May ninth, Tuesday, May fif- fourteenth, and a Wednesday, May fifteenth. So we did three full days of twenty-four hour counts and then we averaged those together. And we do that when we're looking at traffic signal warrants. So we're not just taking one specific day. We kind of want to average about three, three typical weekdays when we're looking at signal warrants. So just, I wanted to give you that background information. Um, we found that the peak hours were occurring from seven to eight AM and from four thirty to five thirty PM. And so when we did our study, we took that data that we collected and we were looking at um some counts that we'd taken recently and and other developers in the area have taken for traffic studies to kind of see what the growth rate uh most recently had been out there. We were seeing anywhere from three to five percent on some of the side streets. And one, one sixty nine was less uh aggressive. Um, but knowing, I guess I was conservative in my assumptions on the growth and I went with the like three percent and then kind of backed off to the future twenty year. Um, and I couldn't get the signalized intersection to operate at what KDOT ex- would it describe as acceptable for twenty-year condition. And that's a level service D. The overall, it's kind of graded like A to, A to F and A is the best, F is the worst. And in twenty years, with those growth assumptions, I couldn't get the intersection to work with a traffic signal. And KDOT informed us that they could not approve any improvement that we're projecting would not operate in twenty years. So we, when we met with KDOT and they talked to their growth modelers, um, we determined a one and a half percent annual growth rate would be more applicable. And so that is, when we redid the study, kind of started all over and took a one and a half percent annual growth rate. And then we were able to get the intersection to operate acceptably in a twenty-year condition with some additional improvements, including a southbound left turn lane, which you'll see modeled here. So you have two southbound left turn lanes, which requires widening a hundred ninety first street to accommodate those dual lanes, which we will take all the way to Webster and drop as the right turn lane there. So, and then we had the side street improvements, which you'll see there, we have left, left turn lanes and right turn lanes on each approach there. And so we also had to kind of widen it out a little bit so we can make sure that the can lift, the opposite left turns can go at the same time. Because if that doesn't happen, then your traffic signals kind of have to have longer cycle lengths because you have to wait for one approach to go and then the other. And that's bad for capacity. So we kind of tweaked things to get it to work uh for the twenty-year condition. And that's when we met back with KDOT. And I was upfront with them on what I had changed in my model and made sure that they were okay with what I was changing before we kind of finalized. So it was kind of a little bit of back and forth with them on those kinds of assumptions. Um, and then we looked at crash data and when I initially pulled crash data from KDOT, um, I, I give them the intersection area and I request the crashes and they're provided directly from KDOT. And and then that initially only went to May of twenty four. But we had had some crashes from May to twenty four and at this time it was like the end of the year when we were submitting to KDOT. And so I had asked for any updated crash data they could provide. And so that was the updated crash data we were waiting for on KDOT and they were able to provide a few more crashes that we incorporated. We were waiting on those last two reports and and so we got those incorporated. It did not include the crash that just occurred last week. It takes a little bit of time for that local police report to get through KDOT's system. So it does not include anything from December through current. So December was the last crash data that was included in our crash analysis. What we found with the crash data, there's a lot of confusion in the median today. I'm sure everyone's aware. You know, there's not a lot of direction for people who pull out in that median to make turns on where they're supposed to go, causes sight distance issues. And and so I think there's a good case to be made uh for the safety improvement of this, this traffic signal. Okay, I'm gonna switch to the PM peak model. You'll just see the difference in the PM. You'll see the heavier southbound movements where the AM was the heavier northbound movement. So same kind of stuff, but running through that. So to get this to work, I, like I said, we had to add a second southbound left turn lane and extend that left turn lane to three hundred and twenty-five feet. And we have to extend the northbound lanes to three hundred and seventy-five feet. So one of the things that came out of our talks with, with uh Trans Systems as KDOT's representative, this, what you're seeing here is a little more advanced model than we typically do. This is a, a sim traffic simulation modeling. So it takes a little more time and effort to get these simulation runs. You have to calibrate them for existing conditions versus just a synchro, which is more of a static look at things. And KDOT was worried and rightfully so that those through queues, you know, from the traffic on one sixty nine that stops, if those turn lanes aren't long enough, people won't be able to get into those turn lanes. And so that affects the overall capacity of the intersection. So we kind of had to do some iterative analysis to determine exactly how long those needed to be to satisfy a ten-year condition. If the signal's still in place in twenty years, the city would most likely have to extend those even up to like five hundred feet to get everything to operate acceptably. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the study.
I guess it's great. I love seeing the visual representation there. I think that'd be great to, I think everyone in that area would, would love this improvement on there. So it's exciting.
Is this precisely what it would look like with the divided lanes with either like a on, on a hundred ninety first? So like the westbound on a hundred ninety first, yeah, so like how there's essentially where the yellow is, would that be not road or will it really look like that? Because right now it's just a two-lane road.
Right, it, it will have to be widened.
Okay, but it'll look pretty close to what this concept.
Pretty, yeah, this is a very conceptual. It's, it's not engineering, engineering, you know, engineering sound design here, but it's just a visual representation.
Not the right measurements, but all the lanes are correct.
Right, yes.
Will there be some sort of center divider then on the hundred ninety first street? Or is that just how it mapped out?
Um, right now, we're just planning on paint for that, not erase median for a divi- for a divider there.
So I had a question. On April seventh, the um that was submitted back to KDOT then?
Yes, we submitted on Monday, yes, the revised study.
Okay.
Yep.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
And and the studier, when you put this together, does it, or do you have any idea what the added, you know, um commute time to get from like, say, a hundred ninety ninth to I thirty five? Like what type of added time it puts to it?
We didn't study the whole corridor to know that, yeah. But it does, it will incur delay onto drivers on one sixty nine.
I've heard people that are like crazy. It's like, oh, fifteen more minutes. But I don't, I can't imagine more than two to three.
Oh, it's two minutes.
Yeah, yeah, the cycle lengths we were using were about a hundred and forty second cycles.
Okay.
So just a little over two minutes to, you, you, if you had to stop for a whole cycle, you would be there a couple, you know, a little over two minutes.
And you don't foresee any issues of it backing up to a hundred ninety ninth?
No.
From there, okay.
No.
Maybe, uh, I wonder if.
It's a pretty good distance.
I would say that one's not too bad. I guess if it's a hundred eighty third might be worse because that traffic's worse coming. Are uh, are the improvements on a hundred ninety first that go east and west? Cause so that goes like, if you zoom it out, goes all the way to Woodland and I'm not sure how far on the west side it goes.
Yeah, and this, I.
If it goes all the way to Lone Elm or not?
This, no, this, this improvement will just go to Webster here on the east side.
Right.
This, this is shown this way because the model, to get the model to allow all the traffic into the model that needs to, you have to have these really long links. So this, the representation of how long is not necessarily correct in this model because I had to, I just need to make sure all the traffic can get into the model.
The width is really on, only at the stoplight or at the lane?
Correct, yes. Yeah.
That was. The rest of the road will be technically about the same.
And these are to scale as far as the lengths of the turn lanes. Those reflect a hundred and fifty feet plus the taper. And then the, you know, the, the lanes on a hundred sixty nine are, are graphically to scale as well.
Can you go back to the, the AM model? And kind of get a little closer, probably about like
Seven.
School time, seven thirty, seven forty-five? Cause it didn't seem to really go past that seven twenty. Um, and I just, I know there's a lot of issues with congestion right now with people trying to cross the highway, go to, going to this the two middle school and.
It's almost like worse in the morning.
Yeah, there, there it is.
Yeah. So you'll see that part of the problem today is those right turners can't get unstuck from the through, it's just one lane.
Yeah.
So everybody that wants to turn right kind of gets stuck behind anybody who might be going through. And so by adding that right turn lane, you're really kind of helping that, that traffic flow.
Okay, that's why I figured just have an extra turn lane may be a huge difference, so.
Um, it's my understanding that that intersection right now is completely avoided by bus traffic as of currently, just because of the lack of the light.
They were.
So do the models.
I don't know, but it's, they, they should be. Yeah, they.
They have been going through.
I think they do use that.
So the model currently accounts for the buses going through then also.
Yeah, we took, we got counts for heavy vehicles, which include buses and and so those are all accounted for in there.
Well, I think if, if it's relatively accurate here, during the morning time, you could see yellow long vehicles coming. I assume they're buses coming to there. I mean, it could be a semi truck too.
Yeah.
It doesn't, we just call it trucks or buses or large vehicles in the model, so it's not gonna show up as necessarily a as a school bus, but.
I mean, could there be a merge lane from, to go north?
We talked about that.
Lane to go south?
Like on a hundred ninety first. Um, so those, so I think why that was designed that way, a hundred ninety ninth, is that was put in before the traffic signal was installed there. You don't see those kind of lanes at traffic signals. In fact, you, the expectations of drivers is you are stopped and then you look for your gap and then you go. So providing an acceler- a brick acceleration lane like that actually causes, can, can cause more confusion for drivers. And they're looking over their, their shoulder and actually KDOT was not in favor of that either for safety. So we, we kind of took that one off the table.
Okay.
Yeah, with a stoplight, you don't really need.
You probably need a lot longer, yeah, acceleration lane if you're gonna do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's different at a hundred ninety ninth because you have that separated lane going off of there. So then you kind of need it, but it's.
It's still too short. I mean, that's where the problems come in.
Right, because people don't have to yield like they would necessarily. And I, I think that was only there because the lane was there before the signal and they just left it in.
So I have another question. So we submitted the plan April seventh back to KDOT and there had been a lot of communication before that. So hopefully the plan will be approved. So once it's approved, um, from my understanding, when I talked to KDOT, they said uh three weeks, but kind of pushing more of a month for the engineers to review that. Is that correct? And then?
For the traffic study review or, or for the plans?
Cause they're, they're reviewing the plans, right?
Okay, so yeah, we just submitted the study. It's gonna take, we project about three to four weeks for them to review that study.
Right.
Once we get the okay from KDOT to do this, to approve the study, then we can move forward with finalizing our preliminary design, going in the final design documents and all of that. So we just need to get KDOT's blessing
Right.
On, does this work? Are we going long enough with our turn lanes? Is this configuration okay before we can proceed with the design? Cause we don't want to take the risk of designing too much and then having to turn on a dime.
Sure. So, so once the design, once we get the approval and we do the design, then do we have to resubmit it back to KDOT then?
There's several points that we have to resubmit it back to KDOT to get their blessing. So so whenever we go to finalize the preliminary design, we've got to do a checkpoint with them. And that's gonna take some time for them to review us to get comments back, revise, then we'll go right into final plans. And then they'll also have to do a checkpoint whenever we get the bids from contractors. So there's like three or four more steps that we have to go and get KDOT's blessing on some of these things before we can go to the next step.
Well, I appreciate the clarification because I think we're people, at least the people that I'm hearing from and why I called Lane on Monday and had a good discussion with him was, you know, they kind of keep hearing, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it. And so having this clarification really helps.
I wanted to show you guys that we were really working on it, that there, there was a lot of back and forth discussion.
We're working on it, but it just helps when you hear, you know, when things were submitted and how the rest of the process is gonna go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to answer one of Chad's questions about the queuing and, you know, backups and everything like that, um, we had a meeting. Um, we had a meeting with KDOT about a month and a half ago-ish. And there is some fiber that's along this corridor on one sixty-nine. That uh, we can tap into and they've got the operation green light through the Kansas City metro area that that helps with signal timing and everything like that. One of my future goals for us is to have some of our, to have our signals at. Starting at one hundred and seventy-fifth to one hundred and eighty-third to one hundred and ninety-first to one hundred and ninety-ninth, and then the quick trip signal. To have all of those um, in that operation green light so that.
It's like.
When you get one green, you get all.
Yeah, that's the biggest complaint I hear. Start talking about stoplights, shouldn't do that like.
You're hitting.
It's a cost-effective thing we can do at this point, but uh, and to me, this looks like it's gonna make a huge.
Oh, yeah, massive difference.
Um, do you have a, is this kind of the preliminary look or do you have something you said that?
We do, and I can provide that to you guys. Um, I'll give that to Lane and he can send that out to you.
Okay.
We'll we'll give you the design that we included and the traffic memo. That shows you a better picture of where these improvements are gonna go, what the turn lines look like and actually with some of those like. Engineering standards in there.
Yeah.
So yeah, I'll give that to Lane and he can distribute that to you guys.
Cool.
I really like this demo though. Thanks for.
Yeah, this is cool.
That's pretty cool.
We need more traffic engineers, so show it to your kids, so maybe. Traffic.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they asked me if they.
Like Simpson.
They said, would a live presentation with with like some graphic models? Be good? And I said, yeah, it'd be awesome. I said, I think they'd eat that up, so, yeah.
There any other questions I can answer for you?
No, I think noticing it now, Michael, it's good. Thanks for bringing that up, cause as you can tell, right now, if you're like coming from Dayton Creek. It's backed up to the entrance of Dayton Creek and it's not backing up at all. And this is like the peak time for.
Hmm.
Everybody from now, so.
Yeah, we.
That east to west is helpful.
Yeah, I think that's good.
We saw like ten to twelve cars kind of queuing in the morning at Dayton Creek at the at the worst and the morning peak hour, so, yeah.
Oh, cool.
I think the only other question I think I can think of is moving forward. I know timelines are tentative based on the back and forth of the state. What's a realistic expectation? Is it gonna be? Is this calendar year a realistic expectation?
To start.
Forward to twenty-six, is that gonna be there?
Hopefully fall is my.
That's our hope too, is we're gonna try to fast track this as much as we can with some of the design that's already been done, cause they did a fantastic job of. Um, putting everything in place and hopefully we can make this a priority so that we can take this out to bid later this year.
Gotcha.
So.
Worst case.
Yeah.
That's good, but hopefully this year.
Yeah. That's our hope.
Yeah. Pedal to the metal.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that presentation. Next, we'll move on to consent agenda. These are items that the staff considers to be routine maintenance. But if there was any questions or comments, now would be the time. If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal council action. The first item on the agenda is consider approval of the funding grant for the twenty twenty-eight Kansas Surface Transportation Program or the STBG. To improve two hundred and seventh street from Woodland to Ridgeview and Mrs. Abel, you're back up here.
I'm back. You're gonna get so sick of me tonight. Uh, the next item before you is a request to approve a funding agreement for the two hundred and seventh street improvements from Woodland to Ridgeview. Uh, this includes a complete streets improvement that includes reconstruction of about a mile of roadway from Woodland to Ridgeview. Um, it will include curb gutter, uh, storm sewer, enclosed storm sewer, uh, rather than the ditch line streets that it has today. We'll also have street lights, five-foot sidewalk on one side and ten-foot trail on the other side. The estimated cost for this is over fifteen million dollars to do the one mile of roadway. We have, um, this segment of road is in our five-year CIP for the cars funding. Uh, which we presented to you guys a couple of months ago. Jacob did a great job of presenting our outlay for all the different projects. This was on the list. We had, uh, two point five million dollars projected for our funding, uh, for that project. Um, so we need more money to get us closer to that fifteen million dollar mark. So the end of, uh, uh, in twenty twenty-four, we applied for. The Kansas Surface Transportation Block Grant Program through Mid-America Regional Council. Uh, there's a pot of money on the Kansas side and on the Missouri side and the DOTs give that to the region to allocate to the various cities. There's a competitive. Um, application process, grant review, everything like that, and they have different criteria that they review these applications on. We were able to get funding, which is fantastic, and we actually asked for a lot more than what we got, but we also, um. After our application, they started talking about, uh, capping some of the funding, so we were very, very lucky and privileged to get. Um, five million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Um, that was more money than anybody else did. Um, a point that I'd like to make is Spring Hill hasn't gotten this funding before.
No, we've never, the largest we've gotten before, I believe, was two point seven million. That was the Whizwell, so this this'll double that.
Yeah, no, that's fantastic that we were able to get something like that. So, um, we do have one point three million dollars that is available in our CIP. Project fund that we can also put towards this. Um, we do have some developer agreements and other funding that will assist with the local match and I will continue to. Dig in the couch cushions and continue to find funding. There might be something through the Kansas Infrastructure Hub, through some of their, uh, build, brick, block, whatever. I'm gonna find some B-word funding source out there that that will help us out to help bridge that gap. Um, and in addition to this, we'll have to go through a funding agreement with KDOT, so I wanted to get your authorization to to move forward. This, um, application was submitted before our. Now practice of coming to you before we make the application, so I'm coming to you before I move forward to get your blessing, um, to sign the agreement. And this also includes, since Mark is the one administrating all of this funding, they do have a one percent, um, fee that they take and that's for them to. Manage all of their transportation planners and to review all the grant applications and to. Monitor all these projects and service project. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that goes on, so Mark, um. Deserves this one percent because they do, there's a lot of legwork that goes into all of these grants. So with that, staff recommends approval. Of the funding agreement with KDOT for the two hundred and seventh street improvements from Woodland to Ridgeview and included in that is that one percent administrative fee to Mark. I am available if you have any questions.
So, uh. I think this one's on our cars too, so we have opportunity to get cars money also.
That's the two point five million dollars.
So we've already, okay, I thought that was still kind of.
That is, um, that is not set in stone yet. I think that's on our five-year CIP with cars.
Yeah.
But we were planning on, uh.
That's what we.
Asking for two point five million. And that's gonna be our large ask. We're strategically planning on.
I know we went dialing back some of our our planned years and everything like that so that we can get the best bang for our buck in with this project. Well, that puts us what, close to, if we get that, that'd be close to eight million of the fifteen.
Yeah, I think I think we'd still have.
Pretty good chunk.
Thirty to forty percent that.
Um, it says stop or street lights here too. Is that, um, like the? Street lights or stop or what kind of lights is that? Is that like the actual?
The LED light.
LED lights on the side of it, okay. And then do you know what side sidewalk would be on and what side would be the trail?
Oh, I knew you were gonna ask me that. I do not recall, but if.
The only reason I ask that is because of the sidewalks on the side with all the new developments, wouldn't they need to cover that?
Well, they have, uh, some of those developments have like landscape easements and swimming pools. They don't actually have houses that go up.
So they don't have to put sidewalks on the main road?
Mm-mm.
There's park space on both sides of the road too. The city's got a sliver.
Yeah.
There, then there's also the pond right across the street, so the trail would be. I mean, it's beneficial either side, really.
Yeah, I wanna say it's on the south side, but don't quote me on that.
The sidewalk or the trail?
Thank you. It is the south side. My my sources tell me it's the south side.
Okay.
The trail's the south side, sidewalk's the north side.
Yes.
When does the funding actually hit us? It says in year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so.
It's a refund, right, or reimbursement?
Yeah, it would be a reimbursement, so we would have to front all the money all the way through construction and then we would apply for reimbursement.
We have until then to continue working on developing.
Oh, we're gonna.
Resources.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so as soon as we get this funding, uh, going, then we'll hire an engineer, we'll start working on the design, we'll go through. Utility relocation, utility or, uh. Acquiring easements and all of that stuff, so we're gonna start working on this now, but our construction season will happen closer to that twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, this'll be a big one.
And there's also some, uh, special benefit district.
I was gonna say, I know we talked.
I think one of them is a million dollars and others, I think they're working on it, two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand and. There's another property on the south side of two hundred and seventh that, uh, once that developer comes into it, we'd be talking to them about probably another million dollars, so.
Yeah, but that street, that's gonna probably be our busiest stretch of a mile, I would think, with that many neighborhoods right there.
Mm-hmm.
Depending on how fast those neighborhoods develop.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, if they develop over the next five, ten years.
Well, and they they just in the last couple of weeks started moving a bunch of dirt on.
I was gonna say, yeah, the north side.
Ridgeview and seven thousand.
They started working, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. And if they go as fast as Whizwell does, it's gonna, it's gonna go quick, those guys are.
Yeah, they're probably, I don't think they're slabber, so it won't be quite as fast, but.
But yeah, no, it's. Yeah.
Mm-hmm, they've started.
Other.
Permits on first plat.
It's like, but yeah, no, to me, this is fairly needed, cause you know, it's gonna, I think once it starts, it's gonna go quick over there, so. Um, I know it's something we promised when we were approving all those things, so we need to make sure we. Get a ton of it. I think it's great that you went out and found this, cause this is, this is a huge one.
Yeah, five million.
A third of.
Plus million dollars.
We fought hard because we were, we were at the end of the list of the people to get funded, so we were lucky to get the five million and everything, um. And another point that I'd like to make is if wanted to, I don't know how much we have in the Stormwater Utility Fund, but we do have Stormwater on this project. So to help shore that up, if we had a little bit remaining in that, we could.
That's the hard part, I think we're all kind of, at least.
We're committed.
Last time we talked, yeah, South Street is kind of.
There's only so much money in that fund.
Exactly, so it's hard, but I'm sure we'll work through it.
Yeah.
No, I think this is good.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Abel? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve that staff proceed with the two hundred and seventh street improvement project from Woodland to Ridgeview. Authorizing the mayor to sign funding agreement for Kansas Transportation Program STBG funds. And authorizing payment to Mid-America Regional Council for the one percent project fee is outlined by staff.
Second. Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero zero. Next item also from Mrs. Abel is consider approval of funding grant for the twenty twenty-seven Kansas Transportation Alternatives Programs or the TAP. To install the East Streamway Trail and Mrs. Abel, you start.
Hey, digging in the couch cushions here. Uh, the next item before you is a request to approve a funding agreement for the East Streamway Trail. Uh, the East Streamway Trail includes construction of one point two miles of. Uh, new ten-foot trail that would be, uh, located starting at the intersection of one hundred ninety-ninth and Ridgeview approximately. Um, and go to the southwest along the stream corridor to about two hundred and seventh and Woodland, so it's gonna tie in. Really nicely with, uh, the two hundred and seventh street project that was previously presented. And then also the one hundred ninety-ninth street project that is under design will be under construction later this year. Um, the estimated cost is a little less than, uh, one point four million dollars. Uh, so again, we applied for, in twenty twenty-four, we applied for the TAP funding, which is the Transportation Alternatives Program through. Uh, the, um, Alternative Transportation Programming Committee. And this is all through Mid-America Regional Council. It's just another transportation committee. They've got like seven of them. Uh, so the Mark Board approved us for, uh, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this grant to help us. Um, there is one point two, uh, million dollars available in the CIP. Uh, for us to utilize towards this project to help with that local match. Um, so, and again, we've got the one percent administrative fee for Mark staff that administers this grant, tracks the projects and kind of keeps things moving. So, uh, with that, staff recommends approval of the funding agreement and the administrative fee to Mark for the East Streamway project. I am available if you have any questions.
Do you have any layout of what it would look like?
We've got, uh, something like a rough map showing the area, but no, for the.
So is it gonna run like down one hundred ninety-ninth to like Brookwood Farms or what's kind of the thought?
Well, it's gonna be, uh, along the stream corridor.
So all the way through those properties, cause isn't it some of that county still?
Yes, I.
Over there?
No, I think that one goes down through, Tom Smith's.
Yeah.
So it kind of goes down. One, three, from.
We have Briggs's property is next to Tom Smith. And he's close to one hundred ninety-ninth, so do they have to go through those properties?
I think it's closer over to the east.
So like over by Brookwood Farms more?
No, no, so go east.
Oh, you're talking.
East Ridgeview.
Okay.
Where the high school admin.
Yeah.
Straight down from there going.
Yes.
Oh, that property, okay, yeah.
Through the big.
Two, two hundred and seventh from there, okay.
It's probably all the floodplain.
Yeah.
It is, it is, yeah.
It is.
I was thinking it was gonna go through.
Yeah.
Kind of that Hidden Hills area.
You find the floodplain and you see where it goes.
Across the road east, it's the.
Okay. That makes more sense than, cause I was like, wait, how the heck are we gonna get?
Yeah, it's between Ridgeview and Renner. It's halfway between.
Okay, okay.
Across from the high school.
Cool. Cool. How does this work? Do we have to? Complete work by a certain time? Is this kind of approved through two thousand twenty-eight? I wasn't quite sure about that.
So this funding would be obligated in twenty twenty-seven, so that means we would be under contract with a contractor by that time and we would be, um, approved to move forward for construction. And then we would ask for reimbursement afterwards. If for some reason there is a delay, you can get one extension, a one-year extension. Uh, to go into the next funding year, so.
We got a little bit of time though.
We've got time. This is a fairly simple project. We could go ahead and move forward with, um, selecting an engineer. We've got our list of on calls. This is a relatively small project. It's gonna be a design fee of about three hundred thousand dollars for an engineering firm, so we can, um, pre-qualify a handful of engineering firms, have them submit. Uh, scope, schedule and fee and then, uh, move forward a little bit quickly, uh, quicker than going through a full RFQ process like we would have to do on two hundred and seventh street.
Okay. When, um, when we're talking about the funding of it and it's a, you know, you've got here that one point, about one point two is available with CIP. Does that mean like that we have that right now and are we going to earmark that and save it? Cause we we're not spending this till twenty-seven, correct?
I'm gonna let Rhonda answer some of them.
That's what's left.
She's the one managing, she's the one shuffling all the shells around.
The one percent from that.
She knew we were gonna ask.
She knew. She knew.
But, uh, because these pu, these projects are gonna happen two years into the future.
Yeah.
You know, that's why I'm curious. There's a whole lot that can happen in two years.
There is, but she's got a pot of money and she took, um, time, you know, cause she knew these three were gonna be boom, 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 right behind each other. So she took the balance that she had in the CIP for the reserves and she allocated the different ones to the different projects.
And some of these may be bonded projects too.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm gonna find more money.
And if you look at her thing, it, she's basically deducting it on each one to a smaller amount, so the first one had. One, three, now it says one, two, four, then the next one's like eight, nine, so she's accounting for taking it out of that fund.
Yeah.
It's just, yeah, it'll be different on each one as we, as we approve or not.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, you're right. It looks like she is taking it out for the future use or earmarking it. But we can probably confirm with her when she's back. I noticed that too. I was looking at that earlier and I'm like, I was like, oh, it's weird, it's changing. Oh, okay, I figured out that she was just taking the amount each out of each one.
Yeah, and even in the last, uh, report that we'll go through here in just a minute for two hundred and twenty-third street, she said, at the end of all of this, we'll have.
Yeah, exactly.
This remaining, so that kind of sums it up for you guys.
This is good. I I like that we have some flexibility on timing, like wanna do it quicker later, you know.
I'd love to get these projects done as quickly as we can.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I I like. People want more action, so I think the more, the more we can start slamming some of these projects, but.
And I think this would be a good project that ties directly into the one hundred ninety-ninth street too.
Mm-hmm.
With the sidewalk and rail.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'll definitely feed right into that development there. Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve staff proceed with the East Streamway Trail project, authorizing the mayor to sign the funding agreement for. The Kansas Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP funds and authorizing payment to Mid-America Regional Council for the one percent project fee is outlined by staff.
Second. Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion?
Rhonda's back. Do we wanna ask her before we?
Go for it.
Just to make sure.
I'm good.
Yeah, I think I'm good.
I'm fine with it, but just to clarify, you're you're taking out what we're spending on these, right? Through each one, it looks like? As far as like earmarking the money for the project?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what it look like, okay.
Cool. Alright, I think we already got a second, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of the KDOT funding grant for the two hundred and twenty third street loop trail, and Mrs. Abel, you still have the floor.
Okay, so this is the last grant for tonight, but I'm gonna be before you next week, or next time, with more grants. So this, this is gonna continue to be a theme, I'm gonna find the money where I can find it, cause we don't have a whole lot in the budget. The next item before you is a request to approve a funding agreement uh with KDOT for the two hundred and twenty third street loop trail. Um, this includes project, uh, the project includes um improvements, a ten foot trail. And uh if you can kind of imagine where uh existing Webster Street is, from the Aquatic Center going down to two hundred and twenty third street. Across two hundred and twenty third street to Victory, and then up Victory, back to the Aquatic Center, so it's gonna be a loop trail.
Basically like a triangle, basically.
It's gonna be a triangle, yeah, and this is gonna be um kind of the first start to some improvements down there. So we had an existing agreement with um H and TB to do some preliminary design along two hundred and twenty third street. So we kind of helped button up what that corridor is gonna look like down at two hundred and twenty third street as good as we can get. So that we can figure out where does the trail need to be, cause I don't wanna put the trail in and figure out that I put it in the right, wrong spot. So um because the trail is gonna be on the north side of two hundred and twenty third street, and then trying to figure out, okay, where do we wanna put it according to Webster? It would be great, great for us to keep it along existing Webster, that way we can create a better regional trail. For us getting closer to one sixty nine and maybe tying everything together with with the Greenway Trail that's over there. So um we applied for uh Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant um in twenty twenty four. They did not award too many implement- implementation grants, unfortunately, with that round of SS4A, they gave. Uh, uh, more communities uh money for their studies. We're currently doing our study, which is great, we got some SS4A money, we wanted more. Um, so we were disappointed that we weren't able to get that funding source, so um we were. Had a discussion with KDOT, trying to find coins in the couch cushion again, and asked the question of, hey. We've got this need, we need some funding, what do you have? And so they had um through their emissions program, they've got a carbon reduction program. Um, that is for projects just like this, to encourage multimodal use, to get people out of their cars. And on their bikes or on their feet and using the trails, so this is a perfect use of that carbon reduction program. Um, so I believe that is an eighty twenty um uh grant, so um. We um continue to have discussions with them, but before we take the next steps, we need to enter into a funding agreement with them. Um, so that we can get an engineer on board, finalize some of the stuff and everything, so um. We have uh the funding for the, the total cost of these improvements is gonna be one, one point four million dollars. And that's for one point five miles of trail.
One point seven million dollars, right?
One point four, sort of what was awarded.
We were awarded one point four, the total cost is one point seven.
Thank you, yes, one point seven for one, a lot of numbers here.
It is.
Lot of numbers.
Does that one seven include, and this might, this is obviously Rhonda's question, does that include like the temp bond um financing costs?
That's just though.
That's just straight the engineering costs, the.
Cause this is reimbursable, right, too, so it's not upfront funding?
This is reimbursable after, after the fact.
We were like temp bonded out and then they would reimburse us, okay.
Yeah, so yeah, so one point uh seven million dollars, we're gonna um get one point four in federal funding. Leaving us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're gonna have to pay for, and we've got money in our CIP. That I believe a hundred percent covers this.
Yeah, and this, this is exciting for me, because it kind of connects the middle of the town to the southern part of the town. Right now, you can't safely get from town down to Price Chopper or any businesses down there, so this'll make it to where. And you still have people that ride their bikes and walk that, but it's not very safe at all.
Or run.
Or run, so yeah, this'll get not only a, you know, one point five mile trail, but also connectivity from the middle of the town to the southern part of town. And then crosswalks across two hundred and twenty third, be able to actually safely get across that road, cause right now trying to go across that road is pretty sketchy.
Well, um, this project is just for the trails, so like some of those crosswalk signs and stuff like that, that might be something that we might get in the future. If we wanted to do that, but that's not part of this grant program, it's solely for the trails, um, so.
How will this affect any development on that side of the road? I mean, obviously, once it's in, we can at least plan around it, I would think.
Yeah, and that's our plan, was to go ahead and move forward with the preliminary design for two hundred and twenty third street. So that we could figure out where right, right away needs to be, where utilities need to be, that kind of thing. So that whenever we have future development discussions, we can talk about, well, this is where we plan on having your entrance, this is where we plan on having the trail. And I really would like to see um the development, you know, hopefully we can identify where good like cross connector trails could be. To kind of bisect that triangle uh a little bit better, instead of having to go all the, all the way around the triangle. Maybe we could have a couple of bisectors or something that looks a little bit more strategic throughout the development. But it'd be nice for us to go ahead and set that in stone, so that whenever the development comes in. Yeah, we could maybe identify, okay, the trail needs to go this way instead of that way, but this is what we have identified as our improvements.
Yeah, just cause, yeah, you don't wanna get to a point where you have to rip up a bunch of stuff, we just.
I really don't wanna rip anything up if I don't have to.
Yeah, for sure. What about on the Victory side? I know some of those buildings that are along Victory are pretty close to the road.
We are gonna be on the west side of Victory.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, when you get down to like where it curves.
Yeah.
Like the house over there, and there's like the building, those are all fairly close to.
I'll send Lane the.
Further on down?
I'll send.
Yeah, cause it goes all the way around.
It's like a creek on the other side.
Yeah, one side's kind of creaky, and then the other side, it's, it's just the, those buildings are fairly close, I don't know how that would work out.
Yeah, we looked at that in the design, and I don't remember there being too much of a conflict.
Okay, cool.
But again.
They are pretty tight there.
If you guys wanted to see just the preliminary napkin sketch of, you know, we've got, I can definitely send that to Lane and he can send that out to you guys.
Yeah, we have it somewhere.
Yeah.
That sounds great, yeah, just taking through the little things that I'm sure you guys already thought of. I just, it's easy for me to think when you.
So we also wanted to look at, you know, some of those intersections are gonna be a little bit more than what they are today. So making sure that maybe we offset that trail to accommodate that large intersection.
Sorry, it's all gonna be pretty far off of the corner, just cause, can I eventually be a lot busy?
Yeah, especially if you put a roundabout in it.
Or if ultimately we have four lanes, so part of their improvements did include uh looking at expanding enough. So that we could accommodate a four lane, and then if we decided that, you know, we wanted to go from a two lane to a four lane. We could just go into that median, so, you know, kind of taking that out as far as we can, so that, again, the trail goes into its forever home.
Yeah, okay, cool. Good, same thing with this one, is it twenty seven, or do we have a timeline on this one?
I believe this was a twenty twenty seven. We were going to, I think, start the design and then maybe take this out to bid, beginning of twenty twenty seven was kind of my timeline for, for everything.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, move to approve staff proceed with the two hundred and twenty third street trail project, authorizing the mayor to sign a funding agreement for the Carbon Reduction Program Funds.
Second.
Got a motion second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is all our favorites, consider approval bid for the twenty twenty five street maintenance chip seal project. And Mr. Spear, you have a floor.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, so tonight, uh, as the mayor mentioned, we have a few items here. And I'll kind of talk about all three uh together, cause they are all related. Uh, every year we do our annual street maintenance uh project, and the city's been doing this for several years. In an attempt to, to catch up on our needs uh for uh pavement condition throughout the community. In the past, the, the most economical form of, of street maintenance, and, and when I'm talking about maintenance. I'm talking resurfacing, just trying to seal the surface to keep that water from getting in to, to further uh erode and degrade. The, the base, so not, not wholesale, you know, dig it up and reconstruct it. But, you know, do the things needed to, to preserve and extend the life of that pavement. The most economical form uh of that pa- um, street maintenance is chip seal. It's the most economical, it's also the, the least popular uh with, with, with residents and just motorists in general. And in talking with council in years past, uh about projects from years past. I know last year there was a desire expressed to, let's, let's look at doing less chip seal. And, and more asphalt pavement and, and things that are just nicer to walk on, bike on and, and drive on. So what you're gonna see uh tonight and, and the, what we proposed for the twenty twenty five projects is. I wanted to, I wanted to give you an idea of what that would look like uh in terms of both dollars and, and productivity. Um, you know, we, we have a fixed amount of, of money in the budget, so if, if, as we go to more expensive uh. Uh, street maintenance methods, it's just gonna mean that we get a little less done uh with that. Um, so, you know, this year is, is really intended as a, a, a bit of a, of a pilot project, if you will. To say, okay, here's, here's another way of doing it, what's it look like, and, and let's see, is that, is that, are we meeting those goals? Is that the direction we wanna go in, or, or do we wanna, you know, do we wanna back up and take it in another direction? So all of that said, the first item before you, uh, so we, we bid out three different aspects of this. And the first one is a little bit of chip seal, uh largely because some of our roads just aren't really good candidates. For other forms of, of street maintenance, and uh so there are just, just two small sections of uh, of street on here. For chip seal, um, and you know, it's a, the low bid was a total amount of eighty two thousand dollars uh worth of chip seal. And uh, so the, the low bid uh was uh provided by APAC Kansas. In the amount of eighty two thousand four hundred twenty two dollars and five cents. Uh, the, the RFP that the city put out, and, and sticking with what we've done, we started it last year. Um, that chip seal bid includes three different sweepings, so if you know, you know, in chip seal, they, they put the uh. The, the oil product down, put the, the rock chips on top of it, and, and sweep it. You know, the, the excess chips off almost immediately, um, and then up until last year. Then the city had, had done a second sweeping, last year we added a third sweeping uh to that, we've kept that uh in this project as well. So that, that eighty two thousand dollar number includes the chip seal with, with three sweepings, to try to minimize the, the loose chips.
And that third one was added, cause I had multiple citizens reach out to me and say, and we went and drove some areas and stuff that had been done for months. And there was a lot of chips still setting loose and stuff, so that was kind of a request of mine to add another one on. Because it just seemed like there was still a lot of chips, now you're still, you're not gonna get all of it, but it definitely, see, that third one definitely seemed to help quite a bit.
Yeah, well, what I've always noticed with chip seal is, like, South Street to me is a better location for it, cause you're gonna have a ton of traffic going up and down it. It's the side streets that seem to be the big struggle, cause cars don't go up nearly as much, and then, like you said, kids riding bikes or whatever is kind of dangerous on it. So these two locations seem like the right types of locations, do that type of stuff, especially like Lone Elm, cause it's just out of town a little bit. So it's not as much traffic, but it's not also where probably a ton of kids and stuff are gonna be, people trying to ride bikes or run or whatever.
Yeah, I should also mention, part of the preliminary work for chip seal, before you do the chip seal. Uh, you need to go through and uh any areas that are showing signs of base failure, need to do some base repair there. Uh, and then also uh crack seal, so any of the wider cracks, need to seal those off before the chip seal. Ideally for the best product, that should be done several months in advance of the chip seal. So we have begun to, to kind of create a stair stepped program, uh, we've got an idea now of what roads we'll be doing next summer. So what you'll see here later is we've been trying to do the base repair uh a year before we do the chip seal. So South Street, for example, was included in last year's uh base repair contract, so those ba- base repairs were done. Uh, last year in anticipation of chip sealing uh this year. The Lone Elm one's a little bit different, that we're gonna crack seal that uh with in-house with city forces uh here. Late April, early May, and get that done several months before the chip seal goes down.
When I saw the base repair map, I was kind of wondering, I'm like, what the heck, there's no other work happening, but that makes a lot of sense, though.
Yes, yeah, we, we, we'll talk about that a little more, some of that is, is looking ahead at it next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Well, thanks for taking the feedback and running with it and trying something different, cause I think, I like the setup you've got so far from what I read through, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I like, like, I think, I think we were all pretty much in agreement that, you know, we'd like to see much more asphalt and less chip seal. We, I think we all agree that chip seal is good for what it's good for, but we'd still rather spend that money, even if it's a small amount, kind of like the sidewalks. We'd rather, we'd rather do one block of sidewalk and, and do it right, do the right area. And then, you know, do, you know, ten blocks of an area that we don't think is really the top priority, so. Awesome, any other questions or comments on that one? If not, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the award of the twenty twenty five street maintenance chip seal project to APAC Kansas in the amount of. Eighty two thousand four hundred twenty two dollars and five cents.
Second.
Got a motion second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of bid for the twenty twenty five street maintenance program, and that is the U-BASS project.
Thank you, so this is another method, and this is kind of the uh, we're talking Goldilocks and the Three Bears, this is the one in the middle that's, that's maybe just right. Uh, and so U-BASS is an acronym, and it's a, it's an ultra thin bonded asphalt surface. And traditional asphalt, if you get it thinner than about an inch and a half, it, it won't hold together. It, it needs a little more mass and a little more thickness to, to bond to itself and to the roadway. Uh, U-BASS uses a, uh, without getting too technical, it uses a special polymer that allows you to put that asphalt down. Really, really thin, half inch to three quarters of an inch, uh, so, which all of that brings cost down. But on the surface, it still looks and feels like asphalt. Um, a good example, so the city did a U-BASS project several years ago on uh Webster.
Yeah.
Uh, so, um, that's, you know, we, we've got some experience with it. I will say, the one caveat, and the reason U-BASS isn't a good candidate everywhere. Is you really need to have a defined edge um at the side of the road to hold it all together. So it works really well for streets with curb and gutter, without the curb and gutter, um, it, it will tend to, to unravel. On, on the edges and, and doesn't hold up well, so it's, it's not a good product for all of our streets. But, but where we have curb and gutter, we have that defined edge, um, it, it's a good way to go. It's about three times the cost of chip seal, but quite a bit less than a traditional mill and overlay as well. So it, it kind of falls in the middle there.
It's kind of the, the peak one for like the newer neighborhoods, where we're just trying to keep them nice, so that they don't get to a point where you have to do a whole.
Yes, yes, so our, the existing, you know, our subdivisions where curb and gutter streets were installed when the subdivision was new. Uh, U-BASS is a, is a good candidate there, we've, we've got the curb and gutter, and if we, if we get on it early before it, uh, before it deteriorates too far. Then, then U-BASS is, is a great candidate, uh, and that's what you'll see in, in this year's bid. We're looking at uh the Meadows subdivision on the west side of town. Um, west of Harrison, just north of, of South Street, and uh it's all curb and gutter streets. Looking ahead, so we went in with city forces uh last summer and did the base repairs uh in, that were necessary through there. And uh, and the crack sealing, that was done last summer, so they can come in uh with the U-BASS. So the, uh, the, the bid for U-BASS is, this summer was the entirety of the Meadows neighborhood. And so it's going in, catching all of that, which all of those streets went in at the same time and, and generally deteriorating at the same route, at the same rate.
I have a question really quick, I, I don't know if I can ask one. Is it okay?
Please, yes.
Okay, well, it's kind of, it's not really applicable to this, but what are we requiring, like, new developments to actually put in? Are they putting in asphalt?
So they're putting, they're putting in asphalt, uh, concrete curb and gutter uh with, uh, with asphalt. That, that asphalt depends on the, the classification of street, whether it's a low volume residential street. Or a collector arterial, the amount of asphalt thickness and so on varies, but, but yes, what we're, what we are requiring are asphalt streets. With concrete curb and gutter.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
Sure.
I like the uh, the approach to doing the whole neighborhood. The U-BASS should be. The U-BASS should be real good on neighborhood streets. As far as longevity, like, I mean, we've seen how well it's held up on Webster, which, which gets way more traffic than any of these neighborhood streets are. So, I mean, you're going to get two to three more cycles of life out of that, I would, I would think.
And I will agree, like, with the thinness of it, there are some signs, like on some of the entrances, you can see where some of it, in the first year and a half, it kind of started to come up at some of the entrances and some of the cross streets that were used. And, and I think they did come back and fix those, those areas, even, even on the north side, right, right where it meets the concrete coming there, about 207th Street, there was some spots where some potholes kind of developed on, on the new U-BASS. So I have seen like the downsides where, you know, if you, if you did not have curb and gutter, um, but overall, it's been pretty successful for sure.
The, the only other spots on Webster are where the, where water's getting through.
Or, or like before one of the businesses had gravel, gravel driveway. And so there was some breakout where the gravel was coming and killing. So now that they've paved there, I haven't seen nearly as much issues there.
It, it's a good product. It, it is still only half to three quarters of an inch thick. So it, it, it definitely has a shelf life as well. It, it's not a forever treatment, but it's a, it's a good way to, to seal off that surface and get a, get a good top coat and, and preserve the life of that pavement. So we, um, we only had two bidders. Um, the U-BASS, the equipment that you use to put that down is a little more specialized. Aren't that many contractors in the area, uh, that, that have the equipment necessary. Uh, and, uh, so we had, we had two bids, uh, but I will say that they were, um, came in just under the engineer's estimate, so they still seemed like, like good numbers. Uh, the low bid was provided by McAnany Construction. They're also the contractor that did the Webster Street, uh, project several years ago. Uh, that bid was in the amount of two hundred fifty-eight thousand one hundred seventy dollars and fifty cents. And, uh, staff would recommend approval of that bid. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Uh, timeline, again, just, uh, from start to finish, how long is that project probably going to take you guys?
That's probably, uh, honestly, with that, um, couple of weeks. Uh, they'll be in and out of there pretty quickly. There's a.
Not a major disruption to the neighborhood.
Yeah, there's some real, they, they call it micro-surfacing. There's milling, not, it's really just to, to kind of scratch the surface and get a texture that it will bond to. So they, they will come through and, and, and mill that, uh, you know, that neighborhood fairly quickly, and then the, the U-BASS goes down pretty fast. So if, if we have good weather, that, that should be a couple of weeks and they should be in and out of there.
Yeah, and you can usually drive on it within a couple of days.
Yes. Yeah, and, 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 and a day later, you can drive over it and, and never know that it was recently put down, which is also a big difference from chip seal.
That's good here. Well, I'm excited for this one.
Yeah.
We're doing it, see how, how it works, and then maybe we can utilize it more if it works out well.
And I like seeing it going down in one of the, I wouldn't say older neighborhoods, but established neighborhoods that's been there for quite a while. So it's nice to see them getting some love over there, too. The other questions or comments? Not entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the award of the 2025 street maintenance U-BASS project to McCannan. How do you say that?
McAnany.
McAnany Construction in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents.
Second. Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of a bid for 2025 street maintenance base repair and asphalt overlay in 2025 Cars, 207th Street, Webster Street to Woodland Street, or Woodland Road. And Mr. Spear, you still have floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So now we're getting into some slightly larger dollars, uh, but we've got some good economies of scale here. Talked about the asphalt overlay as part of the annual street maintenance project. Uh, we were preparing, uh, that, that bid and, and preparing that bid package. We realized we also, this summer, have, have our 2025, uh, Cars project, which is redoing 207th Street between, uh, Webster and Woodland. Realized it's the same type of work. It's, it's base repairs, it's mill overlay, with the exception, the Cars project includes just a little bit of, uh, curb and gutter repair and replacement in play, in places where, um, that has deteriorated. Outside of the, of that little bit of curb work, the, you know, the details of, of the construction for that Cars project are virtually identical to our, um, annual street maintenance project and what we do with asphalt on that. So we bid those together. We kept the, kept the line items separate, so it would help with accounting and, and getting reimbursement from the city. But we want to get some economies of scale, uh, from the contractors and, and put together a larger package. If, if they can come in and do more work, then usually that means, uh, uh, lower unit prices for the city. And, and that definitely seemed to be the, the case here. So, um, this bid involves both, uh, the 207th Street Cars project as well as the, uh, citywide 2025 street maintenance program. And you can see some of that on the, uh, map that I attached, uh, with the agenda review sheet. So the, uh, what's showing up in, in red is that section of 207th that is the Cars project. The, uh, what's in blue is what you will see as, as a new, new driving surfaces. And then the green are the base repairs preparing for next year's, uh, street maintenance program. So it's kind of the way that color coding works. So you see the, what we see in blue doesn't cover near the distance or near the area that we have seen in the last few years with, with chip seal. And that's just the, the difference in the, in the cost. But it also allows us to get to some roads that are a little further, uh, a little more deteriorated. And, and a great example of that is, is South Webster Street. Um, just the condition of that pavement would not be a candidate for, a good candidate for chip seal or, or U-BASS, uh, even it, it needs a little more than that. So being able to put a couple of inches of, of asphalt on will give it, uh, a little more structural, uh, stability and, and just more of a structural component that, that roadway needs. So, um, all, all total, all of that work, uh, comes in, um, we had, uh, six bidders, uh, for that, so it was a good, had a lot of interest, uh, glad to see those. And, and, uh, five of those six bids were under the engineer's estimate, so it was, it was good competitive pricing. Uh, that one also, the low bid, um, th- this one was a little, a little unique in that the lowest dollar amount bid, um, the, the bidder did not meet all of the, all of the bidding requirements. There were, um, two, two addendum that were, so the base, the bid went out on the street and then after it was initially released, but before bids were received, um, something new comes up or, or oftentimes a question will be asked of a bidder and we realize, oh, there's something that we need to clarify. So we'll, we'll put out an addendum that, that contains that additional information that all of the bidders can see. Uh, when they submit their bids, they have to, we ask that they acknowledge that they are aware of all of the addendums that have been issued so that the bid they are submitting reflects the, the entire project. All of the bidders, uh, save one, acknowledged both of the addendum, the addenda. One bidder failed to acknowledge the, the second addendum. Just so happened, that was the low dollar amount bid. Um, the net difference to the city, uh, when you take, figure the Cars reimbursement, uh, package, the net difference to the city was, is about forty-five thousand dollars between the low dollar, uh, bid and the second bidder. But again, wanting to stay consistent and, you know, we, we have these rules for a reason and, and, uh, and we, we put out bids, you know, multiple times a year, every year. So I think it's important that we, that we follow those rules and, and really send the, the message that they're there for a reason and, and we want to follow them. So for that reason, um, I, I'm recommending that we award to the, uh, second, second lowest dollar amount bidder, the lowest fully responsive bidder, and that was, uh, um, also McAnany Construction in the amount of eight hundred ninety thousand dollars even. That includes both the Cars and, uh, street maintenance project.
I'm excited about this because probably the two worst stretch of roads right now that we have is that section of 207th Street and then probably the section of 191st Street between 169 and Woodland Road. Those two sections are probably, in my opinion, from what I drive everywhere, about the two worst sections. So this is knocking out one of those.
And, and.
Excited about that.
And I will quickly add, because it's not going to show up in any of your maps, but you mentioned that section of 191st, that's our 2026 Cars project. As far as the low bid goes, um, as far as I'm concerned, we are taking the lowest bidder because if they're not responding to our addendums, they're not, they're not meeting our needs for civil liability defense as far as going through those things. As far as I'm concerned, we did, we're taking the lowest.
And if five of the six did, it's obvious that everyone got all the information and they just chose either to not respond or that they couldn't meet whatever the qualification was.
Yeah, it, chip seal, U-BASS and, and the asphalt, you know, we, we took 12 bids, um, received 12 bids on the same day. And then, you know, 11 of those 12 acknowledged all of the addendum. It, it's just unfortunate that that one didn't.
It's part of the interview process.
Any other questions, comments? If not, once again, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the award of the 2025 street maintenance base repair and asphalt overlay in the 2025 Cars project to McAnany, McAnany? Why can't I say it? Construction in the amount of eight hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, Mr. Spear. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of resolution number 2025 dash R dash zero eight, a resolution authorizing the construction of certain main trafficway improvements and authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to pay off the cost thereof. Mrs. Dunn, you have floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Um, so we've heard a lot about good projects tonight and a lot of things that have been happening. Um, we see a five-year CIP, and tonight we're going to talk about how we're going to fund those projects. And so, um, I'm going to turn it over in just a minute to, um, Tyler Ellis from Kutek Rock, who is our bond counsel and helps me with all these, um, did I say Tyler Ellis? Sorry, he's another guy I know. Tyler Ellsworth, he's here, so I'll let him come up. Um, anyway, so that he, um, ad- advises us along these issues and keeps us, uh, meeting all the obligations of the bond issue. So tonight, the first one that you're going to look at is temporary financing through general obligation bonds for two very important projects. That's 199th Street from Ridgeview to Renner. Um, we, we've been talking about this one since I came to the city, uh, through, almost three years ago. And then the project for that stoplight at 191st. Both of these projects, we are reimbursed or we pay the full amount of the construction and then there may be a grant or there's Cars money or something like that that will offset. So we have to temporarily finance the full amount and then in the end we'll bond the net of what we have left to owe. On the 199th Street project, you ask us to, um, consider placing cash, um, that the city has towards the project. So when the end of the line comes, we'll pay down some of that temporary debt with cash on hand and, um, bond the, the lowest amount that we can at that time. Um, the, we have, um, bonds out or grants outstanding. We don't know the dollar amount of today, but we're looking to fund these projects in the neighborhood of about thirteen million dollars to get construction going and keep the projects moving. With that, I'll turn it over to Tyler. Thank you, Tyler Ellis.
All right. That's right. Tyler Ellis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have much to add, uh, to what Ms. Dunn already explained. Um, maybe I'll just note that at this point in the process, we're not issuing any debt. These approvals tonight are really just, uh, almost like a placeholder saying the city intends to issue debt for these projects in the near future and providing you authority with a dollar amount to go out and issue that debt. But we have to come back to you. It'll be probably at one of your June meetings, um, to authorize the sale of temporary notes for the construction financing here.
And will we keep these separate, um, as far as bonding goes or will we bond them together?
The two projects?
Yeah.
We will bond them together. We'll probably track them as separate projects, um, and I would defer to Ms. Dunn on that, but that would be my guess.
That is correct. It's most economical for us to put them all, as many things together as we can. And I did forget to mention that these will be paid from the general fund, which was also a part of the discussion in the 2025 budget.
Yeah.
That, that was how you prefer to, for it to be done within the budget that we currently have.
Yeah.
So we're working on that.
Um, with that said, yeah, I mean, I don't really care where the cash goes. I think either project would be fine, but if we're going to bundle it together, it's kind of all, I guess we can line on it, wherever you want to line on it. Um, when we go to do from temporary to the final bond, will we have reimbursement if we are awarded that from the state by then or we have to bond it out and then try to pay it down or how does that work? Would we be able to work all that out before we do the final bond? Or the permanent bond? Okay.
Yes, we plan to bond the net, the final net number.
Once we figure all that out.
Right.
So, because how long do we have to keep the temporary bond out after the projects are finished? We only have a short period, right?
N- normally we do a two-year temp note, but you can go up to four years. It just depends on, um, your financial advisor will work with Ms. Dunn to figure out when those grant funds are coming in, like you're asking.
Yeah.
Make sure that we don't have a mismatch there.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
That was really my only questions. The rest is all pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and like, like the examples we've had earlier today, we've, we've done pretty good about getting a lot of grant funding here lately, so we'd like to continue that trend for both of these projects.
Any other questions?
Questions, comments?
We've done this quite a few times.
Yeah, we've, we've hammered this one quite a few times. Uh, with that, I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to adopt resolution number 2025 dash R dash zero eight, a resolution authorizing the city's spring of Kansas to construct certain main trafficway improvements and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof all pursuant to KFA twelve dash six eighty-five. ETS EQ.
Yes.
Okay.
Second. Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Last item on the agenda for formal counsel is consider approval of resolution number 2025 dash R dash zero nine, a resolution authorizing the construction of northeast sanitary sewer improvements and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to pay the cost thereof. And, I guess you still have a floor, Tyler?
I do.
This is Dunn, but you don't look like Mrs. Dunn.
I'm not. I am not. Um, so this is very similar to the resolution that you just adopted. Uh, that prior resolution, of course, was for street and road projects. This resolution is just a separate resolution because A, it's a separate project and B, there's separate statutory authority, but we're taking the same approach. We're basically declaring our intent to use temporary notes and bond financing to construct a sewer project. Um, and once the final costs are known, we'll issue temporary notes. And once the final costs are known, then we'll refund those temporary notes with a long-term bond issue.
I guess it answers last time. How much difference is the financing cost for temporary notes for the, compared to permanent notes?
I think they're comparable. I think they're comparable. Sometimes you have reduced cost of issuance from our firm as bond counsel and your financial advisor, but not significant. Um, so if you do temporary financing and then you refund it with bonds, then you do pay cost of issuance twice.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, you have more certainty and you're not locked in.
Yeah. The only reason I say that is longer we go, I would assume we'd have more time to try to get other forms of funding, whether it be especially when it comes to the sewer stuff, we're having hookup fees or whatnot from, if we have development. So should we go longer on the temporary? You know, that's my only question.
We could do that. And actually, your financial advisor could probably tell you, you know, if, does the market want a two-year note versus are investors willing to go three or four years?
Yeah.
And what does that do for interest rates?
Yeah, what does it change the rate and all that?
Yeah, yeah, but those are valid questions for them.
Yeah, just because we are, you guys are doing so good at finding other funding options. It's like, do we really want to lock ourselves into the permanent financing if we can maybe try to find them before we get to that point? So that's the only thing I'm thinking.
Okay.
Who knows? Right now, I know we're not deciding that, but.
Yeah.
It's just something to think about.
Well, it's good for us to keep in mind as we move toward a June note issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it probably has, you know, we'll probably see how, how development goes in that area over the next, next year or so. And we'll be able to tell whether we think we need longer notes.
Staff met with, uh, a developer in that area and at this point, they're requesting to have the sewer available to them by Q3 of '26.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a real tight timeline to hit that.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying. So we'll have probably some hookup costs there that we can throw into the financing status. That's the only thing I'm thinking is that there's a lot of area up there, so.
That'll also be your first, I guess, application of your new city code regarding our sewer benefit areas. So, which allows for some additional repayments by the property owners when they hook up. So yeah.
See, and that's kind of like, yeah, if we get some good movement over the next three or four years. Yeah, and then you, maybe we can throw some more cash at it before we do the permanent bonding. I know we have a lot of sewer to go ahead of us, but that's why I'm trying to think like, how long can we try to offset as much as we can? All right. I don't know. That's, that was the only thing I was thinking about.
Okay.
Outside that, I know this is needed, so.
Any other questions or comments? I entertain a motion.
Uh, move to adopt resolution number 2025 dash R dash zero nine, a resolution authorizing the city of Spring Hill, Kansas to construct certain sanitary sewer line improvements and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof, all pursuant to KSA 12 dash 617 and 12 dash 618.
Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Not all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, sir. And then it's formal counsel action at this time. Move on to a discussion item. And the discussion item is revision of ordinance related to the keeping of chickens. And Mrs. Long, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, so the last council meeting, Mr. Young had asked us, uh, staff to go back and look at our chicken ordinance. And looking at maybe reducing the lot size requirement. Currently, right now, it's a quarter of an acre, um, and on that quarter, up to just under a half is a maximum of four, um, chickens. Um, four hens allowed and then, um, a half acre to just under an acre is six and then one to three acres is, uh, 12. Back in 2020, when this all came about, we researched the surrounding, um, cities like Overland Park, Alatha, Leewood. Um, most of them only allow chickens at three acres or more. Um, like Alatha will allow you to have chickens, um, if you're under three acres, but with a special use permit. Um, that's kind of the same for like Leewood and stuff. So we had to look at it as, since we don't have a lot of those three acre lots here, we had to look at it and be considerate with your neighbors and how close those chicken coops would be. So we had to put those setbacks, um, on some of the requirements. And we thought that at that time, our minimum lot size for an R1 straight zone is 9,000 square feet lot. And so that's roughly about the quarter of an acre and that's kind of why we went that route, so it could make sure to meet those setbacks. We've now looked at, um, reducing it to about 20, point 20. That's about 8,700 square feet. This would also now probably include most of our planned zone residential, so some of them can take, can have chickens if they, if they desire. So that, uh, we would maintain the same setbacks and number of chickens. We, and no roosters, of course. So it'd just be strictly looking at reducing the lot size requirement.
I, I like it. I think it gives opportunity for more people to have them. I still think we should have a requirement on there rather than reducing it down to zero. Um, I think for one, for the better of the chickens, they need a certain amount of space to, to be able to roam, roam free and stuff when they're running. So I like the point two. I think it's a good, a good size requirement. I'm, I'm open to raising it for more chickens, you know, raising the minimum to six. Obviously still no roosters. Um, I think six is a good number that several of the cities around, I've researched it back in 2020 as well. And there was a lot of cities that did six and then, you know, with a maximum of like 12, if, you know, you have the acreage. Um, so that'd be my suggestion is point two, and then raise, raise the minimum to six.
So I have a question.
Or maximum six.
I've, I've never had chickens. Okay, so this is all some education for me. So my question is, is in determining the amount of chickens you have, is it just, I mean, is it just pretty self-explanatory? Like the, they don't want, the whole goal here is to prevent a whole bunch of chickens like taking over a backyard. Is that the main thing or is there something I'm missing?
Um, I think that's the main thing.
So people just don't have a whole bunch of them around.
Correct. Yep.
Especially. Do chickens attract? Like, is there some concern about their waste or anything like that? Or, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Not the waste as much as the, the chickens themselves attract coyotes and foxes and raccoons.
Predators, yep.
All the things. In fact, I don't have chickens, but I, I had a fox in my yard yesterday morning.
Yeah.
And I live, I live a block down from here, so.
As a guy who grew up raising chickens, um, there's an argument to be said that they attract predators, but the more you have, the less they attract predators because they protect themselves.
Yeah.
Um, as well as square footage for them. Um, the, the numbers for square footage, like, uh, what the gentleman presented earlier, that two square feet per bird required in the coop itself is a great number to run off of for space in general. However, if anybody's ever actually looked at chickens sleeping, they all lay on top of each other and they exist in that two square feet, whether you've got 10 or 15 of them.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, the, the numbers are arbitrary to a certain degree, but they're also in consideration for making sure people are taking care of their animals appropriately and letting the, uh, letting the backyard get overrun with animals.
And I think some of it is too, is I grew up on a farm. We had chicken stuff. Some of it, the more chickens you have, the more the smell is there. And chickens do kind of stink pretty bad. And I'm all for chickens. I love farm fresh eggs. My wife wants me to build a chicken coop right now, so we may be one taking advantage of it. But, um, so yeah, I'm all for it, but there is, you know, you get 10, 10, 12, 15 chickens and you do, your neighbors will notice the smell. Might not be as strong. As long as you take care of it well, you can keep that smell to a minimum. But if somebody starts not taking care of it very well, that smell does creep up pretty fast.
Do you have a general number for how many lots would be included in the reducing the, uh, requirement to?
Um, I mean, I would say quite a bit. I mean, as long as they don't have, you know, also the HOA obviously has the final say in, which is why a lot of those neighborhoods don't allow them. But I would think quite a bit. I mean, we have quite a bit of planned zone, um, residential lots, so I think quite a few of them will be able to take.
To the point, you said point?
Point two.
Mm-hmm. Include.
It should include most of those lots, yes.
And, and I look at the broad scope of this too, you know, back when we did it, you know, I was here when we did it last time and, um, you know, I think people were thinking it was going to be a lot more people taking advantage of it, but I believe we have less than 10 pe, 10 permits.
Yep.
Or around 10 permits out of 10,000 people.
Correct.
And we lower this, there'll probably be a few more, but I don't anticipate it's going to be, you know, a hundred more, a hundred more people coming to get chickens.
I would say if we.
There'll probably be like two to four, four people coming to get chickens.
If we increase the amount of chickens, I think you'll have more people, because that's the main complaint.
Makes it worth it.
They're like, I'm not going to do it for four.
What's, what's our current max?
Um, four on a quarter up to just under an acre.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that was the biggest complaint I've heard outside of the couple that have said, hey, we're just under the point two five, was that four just wasn't enough now.
What do you guys think of that?
I'm never going to have chickens, but I also definitely care if I.
I, I personally think between six and eight is appropriate.
Yeah, and I think, I'm good with, with eight too. I think, I think, I think four is a little too low, so I'm, I'm good with six or even, even eight.
Yeah, the point two, I think includes a lot more homes in, in the neighborhood or in the area. Hopefully that'll allow the people to.
And egg prices have gone down, but there's egg prices, I mean, they're still significantly higher than they were 10 years ago. So, I mean, especially if you want good protein. I mean, that's definitely a great way to go.
So eight to six is my, my number and then point two, I think is pretty, pretty good for the acreage.
I'm fine with both those changes. Uh, Mr. Woods, does that make your property compliant and, and able? Okay.
Any other opinions?
I, I was worried when we did this originally that there would be lots of issues and I've had zero.
Yeah, I, I haven't had a single complaint in four years.
Yeah.
Yeah, and code enforcement, we haven't had any complaints either on them.
So, so kudos to everyone that does have chickens and is taking care of them.
They're doing a good job.
Good job, guys.
Let's add more people and give them some flexibility.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, what do we feel? Six, six or eight? Do we have a inclination towards one of those?
If I got to say, I'd say.
I'd say i, if, if everybody's cool with either one, I'd say let's go with the higher one. So, but I'm good with either.
I like eight.
Let's do eight.
Let's do eight.
Point two and eight.
Um, Spencer, do we have any, I mean, how, how hard is this to change for you? Is it fairly easy? I would assume we're just changing, all we did was, all we did was copy, what, Leewood or who was it that we copied anyway?
Yeah.
So just change those numbers. It's pretty straightforward.
We have it next meeting. Have it ready to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. So two weeks from now, we'll put it into law? Or land on, vote on putting in Jala, I guess I should.
Hey, somebody changed their mind.
All right, next we'll move on to announcements and reports. Um, I can't think of anything that I have. Mr. Young?
No report.
Mr. Dunn?
Nothing here.
Mr. Peel?
Lots of big picture projects tonight, so that.
Yeah.
Cool to talk about and exciting. Um, I really like what we saw from the street maintenance program too. It's in excess of 1.2 million this year. I don't know what the, all the numbers are over the last four years, but it's, it's been a lot. So seeing us invest significantly in our roads still, I, I think that is just fantastic.
Absolutely. Oh, I guess I do have one, one announcement. The State of the City address is coming up April 22nd. So anybody that wants to register for it or hasn't yet, want to come hear me talk a little bit more than I already do, come on out. Mrs. Feedback, I know you have something.
I do. I just want to remind everybody, I already announced this before. May 31st is the mad, um, Mothers Against Drunk Driving run in Gardner. One of my really close friends, um, was actually hit by somebody, um, that had substance use issues and, um, so anyway, she's recovered and still has some lingering things going on, but she, uh, speaks to people. Um, and so it's really to fund the cause, so people could come to that. That would be great. If you Google it or I think I did something on my Facebook about it. It was just the announcement, so the more the merrier. That would be great. Um, and then I just want to say thank you, Allison, to you and everybody else that gave input on the 191st intersection. I know there was a lot of time that went to that quickly. So thank you. I appreciate that a lot. So that's all I have.
I just wanted to speak to the drunk driving thing too. That is, that is a very good program, something that's near and dear to my heart as well. I don't set, talk about it a lot, but a year and a half ago, my family, with all my family, and we got hit by a drunk driver on Christmas Eve. Um, so luckily, everyone was fine. Nobody had to go to the hospital or anything. It's little, you know, minor neck, neck injury, stuff like that, but nothing, nothing significant. So it's, it's hit us firsthand. Um, so, yeah. Definitely. If you're going to drink, get a driver. Just, yeah, so. Mr. Grant?
No report.
Mr. Massey?
No report.
Mr. Lau?
No report.
Captain Khan? That fresh new haircut?
Right. I should cut this myself.
Nice.
The only thing I have is that we've got Coffee with a Cop coming up Saturday morning. Uh, it'll be at the Bean. We've invited Gardner PD, the Miami County Sheriff's Office and the Johns County Sheriff's Office. Uh, one of our goals going into this year was to start really building relationships with other departments and incorporating them too. Because they're the ones that we're going to call if we need help and vice versa. So, um, we'll have a lot of officers from a lot of different agencies there. So we'd love to see everybody out there.
What time is it again?
Um, it's going to start at, well, it's set up for us at 7:30. We're just going to start at eight and run through 11.
Awesome. Madam Clerk? Mrs. Dunn?
No report.
Mrs. Jones?
No report.
Mr. Spear?
No report.
All right, well, nice and quiet today. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number one. Do you guys need a break? Five-minute bathroom break? Are we good to go right into it? I'm good.
This one's 10 minutes?
I think that's right.
Yeah. Uh, move the city council recess into executive session for 10 minutes to receive advice to council to discuss an existing economic development project pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception of KSA 754319B2 of the Kansas Open Mims Act, the open or zoom in the city council chambers at 9:06 PM. No formal actions anticipated following the session. Persons of being attendance are the following: Lane Massey, Rhonda Dunn, Spencer Lau, Tyler Ellsworth, and Emma Kate, bond counsel.
Second. Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion? Not all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. See you guys soon.
Welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened in open meeting at 9:22 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number three.
I move the city council recess into executive session for ten minutes to receive advice of council regarding actual or pending litigation pursuant to KSA 754319B2 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 9:33 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance: Lane Massey, City Administrator; Linda Garrett, City Clerk; Jacob Spear, Public Works Director; Spencer Lous, City Attorney; and Monique Sh. Jones, HR Director.
Second. Got a motion of second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero zero. See you.
It's like 69 to 72 and that's like, and it's like toasty. My chickens know my voice. I tell them get in my belly and I'm in jail.
I literally upped it three degrees. Alright, welcome back everyone. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened in open meeting at 9:33 PM. No decisions were made during the executive session. Discussion was limited to the subjects stated. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number four. Alright guys, let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened in open meeting at 9:50 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. With that, I entertain a motion to move into executive session number four.
I move the city council recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel percentage to KSA 754319 B1 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at? I move the city council recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel percentage to KSA 754319 B1 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at?